Commission report.
The planning commission report for April, planning commission that on first. We got a few different items on the agenda as you can see on the report. For DTA, variance for street front of some new lots, 10-7th and 10th Street. This is the parcel that y'all rezoned approximately a month ago. Everybody should be very familiar with that piece of land. It's been coming before, uh, planning commission council, what defines the rezoning. They're looking at variance for block frontage. Uh, based on the fact that their proposed new lots were on forty-foot existing driveways. So their lock width and everything were all added to it was just based on block street frontage, so. Nothing major there, uh, planning commission noted unanimously to approve that. And then we also had minor subdivisions associated with that, um, three, three tracks. You know, with those variances once they were approved, and the planning commission noted unanimously through that also. Uh, the other thing that came before planning commission that is before we all, uh, this month is the PZD path under incorporated. Um, held public hearing last week. And what this is, the app kind of essentially proposing a PZD better align with their existing use of the property. You know, essentially to continue to be allowed to use it as they are, but to also allow for, um, expansions they see the need in the future. It's not going to actually change the use of property that will be allowed to have, uh, multiple tenants on the property which they already have. But it's really just kind of getting their use of the property in line with a zoning category. So, um, planning commission also noted unanimously to approve this, uh, request to rezonate and send it on to y'all, so. That's the report. We'll move into the actual PZD if you have any questions on that. We can do that.
Well, I have, have we got item three on the agenda?
No, we're on one.
Okay.
He's asking about two, about the easy.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, that's fine.
Um, I heard somebody, so there's, there's some concern with some residents of offense. Can you elaborate on that? Is it required, like?
At this point, no, it's not required by any city government. They're not actually doing the site work or like significant changes to the structure. The concern really wasn't about fence.
I heard.
The fence, the fence was kind of more of a.
So like code is not required, is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. Because they're not actually doing any new construction or anything like that. If they go to expand or add anything in the future, you know, we get a site plan, then obviously some, you know, fencing, you know, from their property to adjacent properties and things like that will be required. It's something that was talked about to, where mitigate kind of the concerns that they had, which was more in lines of, if Pathfinder didn't have this and it switched hands, would someone be able to come in there and allow people that, they were less than favorable about being that are located there?
Any answer to that?
Is that the city really doesn't mitigate?
The zoning?
Yes, I understand.
It is, well, it has to be, that's on our, oh, properties.
Well, and there is a fence, there, there's a barbed wire fence existing between the properties as it sits. So if and when future development would happen, then there would be more of like a actual commercial to residential screening type of material that would be required, you know, to be put in place. You know, whether that would be like an actual fence wall or, um, best standard screen, you know, something along those lines.
That would be if the property looking to be either open to expand and whether they do it internally or they switch hands looking at expanding.
Oh, yes, yeah.
But if it switches ownership, does a PZD follow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so even if it switches ownership, there's still protections that are built into the PZD. If you look at the staff or it's kind of spelled out there, uses.
Eight, seven?
Yeah, well, yes, it might be on the law. So, um, if you look where it says land use chart on page five of the PZD document, that's directly out of the PZD document, which was, um, I'm sure there's another faculty sent to you digitally also. Those are just kind of easier, um, access. But it's residential facility, assisted living, community garden, and outdoor sports direction. So those are the only things that are allowed on that property essentially. And that's straight out of our C three code, which is kind of what they modeled the PZD document after. And there's specific on the next page definitions defining the different modes of facilities from the city's code that are allowed. So residential facility, assisted living was pretty specific in the type of people that they're working with and helping with. And if you even look at the other residential facilities that are listed, extended medical care, rehabilitation, temporary shelter, those things are not listed in the use, so in essence, they whose uses wouldn't be allowed.
Perfect, okay.
So that document will transfer from owner to owner. Obviously, a new order can have been requested transferred straight to C three or C two or something like that.
And then I would come put it over to planning and do the whole process again?
Exactly.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all have any other questions?
Thank you. Next one, now we're on number three, the re-annexation, uh, or annexation of property contiguous to the city of Cape Springs. That is, do you have that information? I know Justin has it.
Yeah, I don't have it. That's always my paperwork.
I know the person requesting it's here. If you would like, we can push this back to when Justin's here.
Yeah, let's do that, because I have a question.
Then the next item is the ladder truck financing. And I've got a few here.
What did we, I still continue with grants and stuff, a lot of the time, but I got back from government capital today. Interest rates, I would like a ten years, five point six nine, and fifteen years, five point nine seven. You can put a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars down. You put three hundred thousand dollars down, yearly payment's a hundred and forty-six thousand for fifteen years.
Can you repeat that, please, again, sir?
A ten years, five point six nine interest rate, fifteen years, five point nine seven. You know, she sent me quotes on a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand consultants for down payments. And then the lowest price of fifteen years for three hundred thousand dollars is a hundred and forty-six thousand. It will vary a little bit with interest rates. And then the top, put a hundred thousand dollars down at ten years, two hundred and eighty.
Three six thousand a year, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty-six thousand a year, we did three hundred thousand down?
Yeah, a fifteen year down.
That's about twelve thousand a month?
I hope we think it was around. Yeah.
It's about twelve thousand, something like that.
Yeah, I put a bunch of numbers in there, can't.
Do we, do we have, we take with anybody else?
I'm out with Kim today this afternoon, we'll reach out to other companies to see if we can get that right.
Yeah, I'm actually going to get with, um, Bob Wright from Cruise and Associates and have him give me a quote as well. Because, um, I talked to Donnie Baker, our, our banker at the, at First Security. And Donnie said that if I can get with, uh, Bob Wright from Cruise, he could possibly get our interest rates down even two per, two more percent, which is going to save us a lot of money in the long run if we can do that. So I'd like to shop around without just jumping right into this finance company that we've used in the past. They're a great company, but again, if we can save, save some money on the, the whole length of the term.
Two percent for a bid?
Yes.
And you're talking, if the total price of the bus, the truck is?
A mil something.
One point seven?
One point, one million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, hundred fifty-one.
Is there a deposit due down?
I don't know. No, so, so did you guys approve it, he'll send over purchase agreement? We'll do that when the, we already set up eleven, eleven and ten, right, so.
I will mention as well, um, he had talked to Senator, uh, our Congressman Womack's office. They came, Congressman Womack toured our, our building. He talked about potential grants and things like that. And he found out that the grant that they were referring to, um, there's like a three percent chance you would ever get a truck under it. I reached back out to see if there were other financing mechanisms through them. And they said, there is, but with the fact that we've already applied for the one, there, that we probably wouldn't be considered for the other. And so now I'm reaching out to Senator Bozeman's office for the same, because he has the same discretionary funds. Only, uh, there's a little bit different set of rules to utilize them. And so I've got a message into his office and we're looking to see if there's a way to get a significant grant.
And we're not getting that truck till next year. We, we put the AFG grant, I think, for three hundred thousand dollars there, perhaps this year. So I'll probably revise with the AFG grant with the ladder truck next year. I mean, just because this year it's a slim chance, don't mean next year it's not a hard chance to get that truck.
And it doesn't mean that you can't apply for both as well. If he, if he's going through the congressman and he doesn't get the funding and we've also applied through the senator, and the senator may still approve it or that's the person. So we're, we're looking at each of our options.
And if they're, when you get the truck delivery mid in twenty-five, they will require payment till end of, a year from that, a first, a day, a commitment.
And you might naturally see a little bit of interest rate fall between now and then, sir.
Thank you.
Don't leave.
Huh?
Don't leave.
I'm not leaving.
The, uh, next item is a resolution to amend the job title for, or job description for the director's job. And, uh, we had been looking at, in the past few weeks, different pay for different positions in public works. And had kind of decided not to, uh, pursue a change. Uh, I'm asking that we reconsider that for the director and only the director. Right now, many of the people that are qualified that have been able to reach out to are from Central Arkansas, Lono, Top Springs, Hot Springs Village, those areas. And with what we've got right now, we can pretty much match what they're making, but we can't give them an incentive to come. And so I'm asking for a little more latitude and to raise the, uh, pay, uh, salary range to sixty-five thousand to ninety-five thousand range.
What was the pool?
Uh, fifty-three to eighty-one.
Mr. Mayor, when you say we, it is, it is just you hiring, correct?
I am hiring, yes.
Okay, but you say we.
Right.
It's, it's you that's hiring, so I don't, I don't want, I don't want the public to think that we have something to do with the hiring process, it's like we're passing a resolution.
Correct. When I said we, I was referring to, I've been working with our current public work, contract public works director on trying to find personnel at a director's level, on trying to approach some of these people because he personally knows some of them or who they work with. And this is a problem that we have both run into in trying to attract them. So that's why I was saying.
Okay.
Well, are we not running into the same situation of personnel being removed?
No.
We're not?
No. I've got two that'll be coming soon. And I've got additional, uh, people that I'm currently interviewing and working.
Well, if we do this land swap, this truck goes through, we're going to do it.
To cover a smaller area.
Don't go on the whole city, that's going to expand those.
Yeah, and it will also, that's coming later. We'll discuss that later. That is not a, uh, concern at this point in time.
It is, but okay.
So Jeff will be a part of the interview process? The contractor will be a part of the interview process?
He has been in the past and probably will continue.
Would you consider doing a panel to include a council member? Because there's been several council members that are willing to step out to help in the hiring process. And I, I don't think that we would be, you know, would include a council member that has been, I mean, there's been several that say, Mr. Mayor, what do we need to do, what do we need to do to help you?
Right.
And I would ask that you, you kindly consider taking them up on their offer, so maybe changing the dynamic. Maybe you'll see something potentially, especially for those experienced in hiring, that maybe you and Jeff do not see because you have dealt with the same things over and over again. So adding another perspective, I would ask that you consider.
I'll consider that. Next item is community building change order. Yeah. That's right in the bag. Okay. As we've seen, or is this common with old buildings? When you get into them, you sometimes find things that weren't obvious from the outside. And we've had a number of those crop up, most of them not that big. But, um, the floor joists, it used to be, uh, the building used to be a gymnasium with a stage. And when they lowered the stage, the, they put floor joists in it at an odd distance and it wouldn't support properly. It was like, um, they weren't even even, they were twenty-four to thirty inches apart. And so we're having to replace those to be able to adequately put a subfloor on it that will line up and be sturdy. They took, there's a drop-down ceiling in there that was done with, uh, two-by-fours. And it was a pretty good-sized grain in there. And they used all of that material to save money in creating a couple of pony walls in there. But it's going to take a little more, uh, materials than, uh, than is there. And they've got that, and it's a safety issue with being able to straighten, raise the roof, straighten the walls, and set the walls back down on it. Uh, there's soil removal from the crawl space. They've not found any active termites or anything, but in, in, uh, removing that floor, they found that that one end of the building is closer to the dirt than they expected. And that that's, uh, creates kind of a pathway for termites and concerns. And so they want to take it down to the, uh, appropriate level so that, uh, that becomes.
Question.
Yes.
Do they not know that? I mean, it sits on a slope.
It does.
And let me, let me finish, thank you. And it sits on a slope and there's a crawl space in there so that they could go in or shine a light and see. Did they not know that when they made the bid?
No, at the time that they started that, there was, uh, still the metal, uh, oh, what is it, ductwork underneath where the heater units used to be. And they could not crawl or pull in through that because of that ductwork being in way. Next item is.
I, mainly as a city, it's hard enough for me to say yes to this with this amount of money. And there's costs going on in the city right now. What is the total?
Right here on the back.
Additional, the total additional cost on top of the, what, we have proved already, what was that?
It was eight hundred and sixty.
Eight hundred and sixty. So now the total additional cost as a city will be centered at two thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty percent.
Right.
This is one of the reasons I wanted to say no. Is because old buildings, and they, I feel like they're not standing by their word, that's a huge amount of money.
I think it's just the seventies, you know, I'm.
No, no, I mean, with the contract that you took.
Oh, oh.
If you add the seventy, seventy-two to it, we're now at nine hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Yes, yeah, like so.
I had just, it is, it is very frustrating because that was going to be my first question, Mike, was you actually asked a crawl space? You think they would do their due diligence if they can't get past a certain area? That they would send a camera in there or something to ask our city for an additional seventy-two thousand, six hundred and ninety? I mean, I was thinking, I was going to say no speakers. This is just, this, uh, I'm not in favor of that, but I, I'll be stuck between a rock and a hard place now.
This is my worry, this is fear.
My question is, Mr. Mayor, is that, can you, can you press number two? Why did you guys not ask us about that?
Because that's what they need.
Well, I mean, that's part of their job, that's not, I don't feel like we need to pay for that, that's just.
That wasn't in the original contract or the plan.
They know that they got to support that somehow, so.
But you haven't.
I haven't, I haven't seen anybody that got to work on old bedding and not knowing that they're going to move, do that much work to it, that they're not, they're not trying to for now for support, that's just, doesn't call for.
And our walls are buckled very much so in and out, so, I mean, what did we just sign up for?
I mean, everything else I can understand, this one, I really don't think, even going under there, I, I know they're saying they didn't, but if there was ductwork under it, I mean, somebody went under there.
To install it, yeah. But as far as this particular charge that you're talking about for the support.
Yeah.
The original plans called for the building to have bracing put across the front of it and push it in until it was straight. And they did not have the plans to have to raise the entire roof to get that to happen. They thought that they could squeeze it basically. And so the plans did not have extra support walls on the inside to be able to raise the roof to straighten the wall and to rebuild the trusses where they're at the right angles to come down on the wall and support.
I understand what you're saying, but I still think that they didn't have much, they didn't have to work on it, building to reconstruct it basically. They should have expected that they have to, uh, you know, we didn't go line by line and see what was in that contract and what wasn't.
They had them turnbuckles in there to hold the walls together, try to hold them up straight.
Cables in there.
Yeah, the cables in there. And they knew it was old, old timber and it was built way back when. That's what they do. That's what they do. When they take a contract, they should take all that into consideration.
Are they experts with historical buildings?
They are, and they brought, uh, engineer in that described how and what it would require to straighten that front wall. And that did not work, they were pressing back on the back wall. And so they shifted to what would work, and this is what would work that wasn't in the original plan because it wasn't what the original engineer does.
So they just went with one engineer and not just one engineer for our historical building?
The, I don't know how many engineers they used, I know they brought one in from Russellville about the wall that's set.
Well, there were multiple walls when I went in there that were affected. I mean, you took me in there, I'm, I'm talking about the sidewalks, not the front, I mean, how did they not? But they're experts in their field. We're not, what does our contract say, we have to do this?
When I went in, they had support walls going this way.
And that's what they're talking about. Some of that was done with the materials that were in the drop-down ceiling, but it needs to go full length. To be able to, the lengthways of the.
Well, then why didn't they do it?
This is what they're asking of us, the ability to do it.
I, I would not, these nine thousand dollars, I personally have a really hard time approving it unless they provide additional documentation that supports that, because right now I have a really hard time. Because later on tomorrow, we could do one more thing, one more thing, and we did not, we did not, somewhere we go over every, it paid off that contract. They, they were supposed to go there, look at it, and make it pay down, based on completely doing it. And I remember they asked here, are we going to come back and ask for more? And he said, no, this is it. Uh, and understanding it's happening in a little bit, but this nine thousand dollars, I'm in the business, I know. This is not culpable, you need to push back.
I mean, all of this needs to be pushed back. And the thing that kicks me off is, I ended up going for this, it would have passed anyway. And we kicked it down, this was my greatest fear starting that building. We get, get into it and then we get nicked and nicked and nicked and nicked, and next thing, it's already almost a million dollars. Already.
Yeah, I mean, Randy, you know, I've been a big supporter of community buildings since day one. I, I, I expected some change orders, I was thinking, you know, realistically with the nature of the project that we might see, you know, five percent or so in change orders, I, you know, so. Um, I, I, I am inclined to agree with him, see, I'm not an expert in this area, I have no links.
I've got an idea there, but I don't mind, uh, discussing that with them and seeing. If they start at one end, I don't know why they couldn't pull them up and slide them down.
Yeah, and I, and I just, I feel like some of this, and then, you know, the big, I mean, the biggest dollar item is the reinforcement of the roof, the trusses. And it just, you know, it was found to be, you know, it's, some of these things do seem like, uh, poor planning on behalf of the contractor that's now getting pushed back on the city. And I don't know that I want to start that precedent down the road, you know, so I, I would like to talk to Justin about what our contract says. I, I would like to see, you know, where responsibility falls on some of these things that, you know, if they made a mistake in engineering, I, I think that some of that burden should be shared by, by them, I, I do. We don't have other historic buildings that the city will pay to renovate, right? And so they may see us as a one and dime and not a repeat customer, and they're trying, you know, but I, uh, and again, I'm a capitalist, so I, 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 I get it, I will get one anyway, but I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm even not comfortable with the, with what I'm seeing here in terms of, you know.
Definitely.
I, 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 yeah, I, I, I need to talk to like some experts that I.
Would you like me to, let's see if we can get the architect here for the next meeting?
No, I, not for me, because he stood right there and he said, you need to spend whatever you need to spend. Well, that's, he stood right there and said.
The architect, I'm fine with having, but I really would more like to talk to whoever, whoever made this bid and then is now asking us for ten percent more, you know, that's, that's the main.
The, one, the reason I brought up the architect is that, uh, he is the, uh, job manager or the project manager. And there are some things that you need to be aware of that they did request. The heat, a couple of these it says here that were, uh, uh, withdrawn, that was with his urging. There was one item where they, that back concrete where the grain comes down was extremely thick. And they're like, we didn't plant, we planned on sawing this with a saw. And he pointed out that there, in the contract, there was no thickness limitations. And so they're removing it with, that, with the contracted price. And there's some things like that that have been withdrawn. But I, again, I don't mind going back to them and saying, look, there are some concerns here. Can we walk this down? Can we do some things that gets the job done without the, this amount of added cost?
Yeah, I think I would, I, like I said, and I'm, I'm fine talking to the architect or, or the general contractor, but I do, I think, I think the council probably has an appetite at this point to have Justin, um, go through the contract with us just a little bit. At least in terms of some relevant provisions, uh, yeah, I think we all, but, but I think, you know, to have him actually walk us through some of the relevant provisions in terms of what their duties are, what our duties, duties are, where some, where some of this responsibility falls, where, what we're contractually obligated to, what we can.
And if, if we don't question this, it would be a problem that we don't, you know.
Yeah.
Need to make sure we do our due diligence.
Right.
That's what we have to do.
Uh, one other question, uh, just 'cause you brought up termites, are we getting a termite bond on the building whenever we finish it? Sorry, my wife's a lawyer for termites, I, I've seen some terrifying.
That's another thing we'd have to double check in the contract, I don't know if that's in the contract or not, it might not, I don't know, but, yeah, but still.
It's a bit of a mess.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with that.
I was just gonna say, some, some of the things, like an unknown subject tank, absolutely, some of the things that make sense on here, like, I, I, I'm okay with, but.
The rotten dirt underneath the old building that we removed is another one of the costs, and there was no way.
Did it was in the crawl space?
It was.
Did they not research the crawl space?
They went back in there as far as they could go with the ductwork, and they knew what they had, where they got back to.
But they take a camera in and up, sort of like, it's an old building, like.
They're gonna have to take the ductwork out anyway.
They have now, I think, they're removing all the plumbing, they're removing the ductwork, all the electrical, and bringing it all up to code.
This stuff being a million dollars, million dollars.
I think one thing definitely, we don't understand that contract, the language that's used in it, that's gonna be, we've passed it, but we really didn't study, and that's.
I guess I thought it was studied, to come with that kind of number.
Well, we, I, I, I do, I mean, I trust Justin insofar as making sure that the language in the contract is normal and is standard, right, you know, and, and obviously, you can redline contracts back and forth, but there, there are contracts that people won't sign, and, and so I, I'm interested to see what's in the contract, because again, I have experience building buildings, uh, or like, having buildings built, but not for a historic building, nothing like renovation, nothing like this, I, I'd really just, yeah, review the contract, have Justin talk to us about it. Sure, and I think, you know, I, I, I can, I can read the mood of the room, I'm sure you can too, Randy, I, I, I don't think that this is gonna be passed until there's.
In its current form or without.
Yeah, um, so.
But Justin, I mean, he went over the contract back and forth, so I'm sure, and it went back and forth two or three times before they approved it, and so I'm sure he can speak to it.
Is this the architect at the bottom that signed it?
Uh, yes.
So he's not an attorney, so Justin, yes, I mean, it'll be good to have him go through it with a fine tooth comb.
I would like a resolution at the next council meeting for the council to vote on, that, uh, in the future, city council will over and approve all the contracts before they are initiated.
I'm not an expert at that, though.
At least you got it in your hands, and you can ask questions if you want.
Well, yeah, I, I definitely think we should get maybe a copy of it.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
I think everybody can kinda seek out, this is one of the difficulties that, you know, we, we talked about in the past, of having, you know, with essentially a, a very part-time, um, council position, you know, and so with long work session at month, and so, um, all things, all things that you need to discuss and teach your department.
The last two contracts we've had, that we've given the mayor the authority to enter into a contract, that's all we get, is to enter a contract with these people, was the fire station in this one that are major. And we've got nothing but problems with the fire station, and now we're having a problem with the doors.
Well, and another thing on, on, to what Mike, sort of what Mike's saying, I actually, I'd be interested to see what the change orders to the fire station cost us at the end, like what the original price was, what percent.
Less than two percent increase.
Two percent, so, you know, I, I just think that maybe in the future, if, if we are passing a big budget item for the city council, maybe setting aside five or ten percent for change orders, just so that we know at the front end if we have the appetite for that or not, and, um, you know, we all know there are gonna be change orders, like I said, I knew there'd be change orders. I, I just, when I was looking at this, it just kinda kept going and going, and, and I, I looked at the bottom, I was like, oh, cost thirty seven thousand dollars, that's a lot, but that's, you know, and I was like, well, that's one item.
Yeah, that's, that's one.
Yeah, that's, that's where my stomach turned a little bit, so, you know, I, I think a couple of things to take away from this, I do think that when we're planning for things like this, we might want some budget on the front end, some room for changelors so that we know if we even have the appetite for the project in general.
And I did that, we did eight hundred and eighty thousand approval on an eight hundred and sixty thousand dollar bid.
Yeah.
So I was building in a little, I wasn't building in a large amount, but a little.
That would've covered most of the stuff once the building was complete for us to put in it. Otherwise, now that's gotta come from somewhere else, monitors, microphones, all that other stuff, that we don't know how much that's gonna cost yet.
You know, Ms., Mr. Mayor, I think that, no, we're not gonna go, I don't wanna go over it again, but honestly, I've done building from bottom up. I can be bothered to say, I know this nine thousand dollar, in my opinion, is questionable, it needs to be pushed back.
It will. And, yeah, and from there, I think, I just, we need more information, I, I'd like to talk to Justin, I'd like to, potentially talk to the contractor, but I think, I think that's all we can do with what we have right now.
I know, how, how much money donations has come in to the community building, obviously.
Probably whatever Randy, I mean.
Has there been any others yet?
No.
There was guys that came in the day after and was.
I don't think they've even met.
What, I'm sorry.
I don't think they've even met.
JJ, do you, can you, um, since you're on the committee, can, can you guys start talking about fundraising, I mean, I had an idea of a fund where, and I, I went in and talked to Chief even about how we could safely do that and start something where, I'm sure, for sure it might not make anything, but, um, to do something like that, to bring more, to more things, like, I mean, those color runs, every, like, it's a very active community, um, that's just one item, if we could start looking at pushing bricks, like something, so.
Yeah, I think it'll be the main focus of our, especially considering this, of our, of our next meeting, we'll leave.
Please, because it's just.
And I, I don't know, yeah, I don't know, um, 'cause, you know, you, you know, all the ideas I have, I'm not quite sure how they, how they, you know, put it in, in numbers like this, but.
Exactly, exactly.
But the fund run's a good idea, I'll bring it up, I, I think we do one of those like world shortest runs or something like that, I might even do it.
Is that maybe, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, wait, wait, what can you do, that, what we're talking about before, could they use, is that coming in as an ordinance or a resolution, or you're gonna find out more information about that, do you have that, or is that?
I don't have it with me yet, uh, Justin was looking into a couple of things.
Is that something that, that comes before the, the meeting next time, I mean, um, an answer to that, 'cause I mean, it's, I'm gonna talk to him a couple of times.
Right.
And it is on the website that we need out of meeting, but.
It's not, because we were looking at changing that, um, we were currently meeting here on the fourth Thursday, and part of the committee has church obligation, so I have talked to, uh, uh, JJ, he's our chairman now, and, uh, we are looking at scheduling a little differently and doing it from city hall so that, uh, some of the members in the team that have, uh, issue with the fourth Thursday.
Yeah.
And so we, we will get that worked out.
Don't worry, we're, we're, I mean, the thing about it is, we, we passed the initial funding, the project started, and it hasn't been a huge significant thing happening since then, we've really been waiting for information, so, we'll, we'll certainly be, be meeting.
No, I mean, I wanna make sure it's on the website.
Oh, just have it on.
It will be when we've got it locked down, but because by the time we got everything approved on routine meetings, we had realized there's a problem here and we're working on.
There is, there's a reason I say that, because it could be public, also their own, and then they would help to donate, and fundraising, donating, it's good to keep the public involved with, so, not.
Well, I've, I've got all the other meetings posted except this, and that's the reason this one's not yet.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, next update, or next is the, uh, Justin's not here yet, is he?
Haven't seen you.
Let me see. Seven oh one, what time is it now, seventeen, he said leaving soon, ten minutes ago.
Just number eight.
This would be actually number three and number seven, I can move to number eight and then give him a little more time. Um, I just mentioned a couple of minutes ago on the staffing, we do have two new, uh, employees coming, and I do have a couple of other potential that we're still going through the evaluation process, and then I'm requesting the, uh, the paid difference for the senior person. The website, if you looked recently.
Real quick, uh, on that one, uh, do you know, like, when we can accept those two guys, are they in, uh, are they in the water side or the street side?
That, yeah, they're not on the street, they're water and sewer.
And then do you know when they'll be starting?
One of them starts April twenty second, the other one we've started through the, uh, I sent the, uh.
He's only coming maybe later in the summer with that.
No, the other one should be, he's ready to start immediately, but we've got, uh, to go through the background check and drug testing, and I sent that paperwork out.
Is that something you do or Kim does?
That's something I sent through Kim.
Kim, what do we have on those, do you mind?
Um, the one young man, uh, that is ready to start on the twenty second, he has passed his drug screening and his background. The other one, I just got his paperwork yesterday and submitted it today for his background, and as soon as I get his background, then I'll schedule him for a drug screening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Worked out on the streets, if these guys are water and sewer.
We've got two street guys right now.
I guess I get a little confused on that because they're fifty percent this, twenty percent this, thirty percent this, and so are these, are these gentlemen going to be the same type of thing, like, or they're?
They will be fifty per, or they will be higher weighted toward water and sewer and lesser to the street side, because there are times after a storm that we're clearing brush and they'll be directing traffic, or there are, there, we're not big enough to be, um, specializing yet.
I understand, I was just wondering if it's gonna be the same thing, but they're primary water and sewer.
They will be primary water, they're primary sewer, and.
Thirty percent water and sewer?
Yeah.
I think they're.
Of course, we haven't discussed it, it's so connected more, but I really think that we need to start thinking outside of ours right now, and have a vision for, because we're gonna have NACO, all those. We need to think for the future of what we need bad, and things like that, that many Chris can get, I'm okay with that, but I'm just saying we gotta look into the future.
Right.
And now for then, that's what we don't.
And I'm waiting heavier toward water, because sewer is gonna be a much smaller part of what we do and to not do this in the future. And, uh, it's still gonna be a necessary part, and it's still gonna be something that we're staffed for, but we will see more of the heavier work toward water side.
We're gonna do what we have, we're gonna connect and act up.
We'll still have.
Have pumps that did.
Pumps and lines and things, but it doesn't require the licensing, and it doesn't require the, uh, level of attention that the pressurized water system does.
I think to be on the safe side, it's as soon as we don't need it, that's a very conservative way of looking at it, that's just the way I look at it.
Okay, next one's the website, if you've looked on there recently, we've made some significant progress on the website, it's been updated with our current council. It's been updated with our current police officers, and they're in the process of getting, uh, some of our forms and documents to be fillable so that people can pull them down from the website, fill them out on, on their computers and can send them as an email attachment, rather than standing at a window scribbling on applications and forms. There's a number of things they're working on right now, but we've made significant progress in the last two weeks.
Who is that?
Um, primarily it's, um, Madison with the planning assistant, and there's also been some assistance with Grayson with Tammy, and a little guidance from myself.
Is the fire, is the fire department listed, I, I, I just paid attention to the council.
The fire department, I think, I think they're listed, I'll double check that.
They are, the personnel are listed on there.
Personnel, they're always in and updated.
Here's my.
Perfect, thank you. It's a start.
It's a, it's a good start, yeah, it's not, it's not through by any means, we're not completed, but it's a start.
So, I have a question on the website, so where, where is the sewer and water committee meetings on the website?
That's the one thing that I need to add yet, we changed the time the other day and we're talking about a new meeting night, and now I'm about to add that, now that we've decided on the date and time that I can be added tomorrow.
And the old, I mean, the previous one is gonna be.
It's been taken off because it was inaccurate.
So we're gonna, when they add, we blow the back up?
Right.
Right, thanks.
True. The next item is the stoplights, do you have an update on that?
There's no change from what we need to, we've still, uh, not seen any response back from R dot on a request, have you seen anything?
I've not received anything.
So we're gonna, we're trying to make sure that we, when we determine buying in, make sure that we're okay with the plan, so we don't, uh, take one step forward and two steps back.
So we're waiting, it's been two weeks, we're still waiting on R dot.
That's correct, you have to go to the chamber commandant, and it has to go to the district office, and then it makes its way to the lock, they specifically requested we not send directly to the lock.
For contact.
That's correct.
So it could be six months?
Yeah, it will be six months.
Oh, my gosh.
Do you see anything going?
Thank you, it's not your fault, I, I thank you.
Do you see anything going in this with that, additional costs, or is that pretty cut and dry?
Uh, it's pretty cut and dry, if, if we can keep everything done on a temporary basis, you remember what we're trying to do, that where the large cost coming in is if you want to put in a permanent stoplight, when you put a permanent stoplight in, you have to have extended tunneling, you have to have sidewalks, there we go, and all of that, so that's what we're acknowledging.
So, what we're doing, it's pretty cut and dry.
Right now, our goal is, our discussion's on site, we'll put metal holes in, uh, rather than put a wood hole, we have to have guidelines, that way we, it looks as if we can do everything within your light of way, and I have to do this whole right of way, we look at utilities and all that, that's our goal, is to minimize it as much as possible.
So what are we looking at cost wise right now, you, you understand?
I don't know. It's, it's gonna be on the lower end of what they were, Peter was just talking about, and they're very brutal.
Yeah, it's not three million.
Chief, you're looking contemplative back there.
No, I'm just listening.
Okay, I, I.
Well, we've worked two accidents there in the last week.
Yeah, well, I was riding with you and Keith, and we almost got T-boned.
Yeah, yes, we did.
It was very scary, it was really fun to watch the person drive after that, after realizing they almost hit a cop, but, uh, it was a scary moment, and, yeah, I think it's, uh, it is one of those disappointing things, yeah, it's obviously not your fault at all, it's, I, but it's one of those things that everything goes so much slower whenever it's the government's involved, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's just a, it's a frustrating situation.
But this is not following their normal protocol, remember that, this is a temporary, it's a temporary, it's not following their normal protocol.
Yeah.
And actually, with the way that it came from above, from what we got, the regional, uh, engineer stated it, it, he made it sound like that this is an accelerated process.
Well, I, I can only imagine a government bureaucrat selling that, that's, that's really, yeah, that's, that's, uh, this turd is candy, you're you guys, and.
We'll follow it, the district office on that.
Okay, thank you.
And then the SOPs, we are going to be developing new ones, Justin's looking for the old ones, uh, I was involved, uh, on the council two different times. Uh, I was involved, um, on the council two different times when they were written and approved by the council and that's the reason I said we have them, they have not been revealed. So technically we have them.
And technically we don't, yeah. But here, right.
You said that they have them, can you blame city employees for not following them? You said, excuse me, let me finish, and do not yell back, I'm cleaning out facts, I listened to that meeting time and time again. You said we have them, but they are being followed. That as a council member is extremely frustrating to hear and it's very dishonest. I don't care what you did on council, you said they lined city hall and you said that employees do not follow them, but you know even more they are. That statement is, needs an apology.
Well, it's not even where they are, but clearly we don't know where they are, we, we don't know their contents and so.
Exactly, exactly why I said that.
So they're not, they're not standard operating procedures if, if nobody's operating by the standardized way, right? And so, um, you know, I just, that, that's something that's a, that's a little exciting to me too.
You, you can't say that we have them and people choose not to follow them when we don't have them.
I think police department is the only one that right now has it, but.
I'm sure the fire department does as well.
We have an old set that I've been working on, updating that since we went to full-time people, um, on how we operate. So I've had to make some adjustments, I've just not took them finalized to come. I'm waiting about a year to see how it rolls.
But you know where they are and to adjust them, you're looking at them.
Yeah, yes.
I, I think that's the important thing is that having that operating procedures is something that, you know, and Randy, I'm not trying to put you on the spot too much, but you've been in a position of being in charge of public works and, um, you know, therefore those should be something that you're intimately familiar with insofar as, as we're trying to administer, um, our employees to do that work and so, um, that's, I mean, that's disappointing.
Again, I'm looking at the bigger picture that as we're growing, as we're gonna have NACO, as we're gonna have, we got to know, but SOPs are, do we have them, do we not have them, are the employer following it or are they not? It's just, it's a little bit frustrating, honestly, to know, because I know at one point I was here that somebody wrote some, that it was the police, they wrote it for police department that they did the job description for the, uh, regular other, other department. I don't remember them writing their SOP, but could be after I was on the council, I'm not sure. However, right now we don't have it and we need to start, right?
Okay, now, a couple of things. First off, never said they were in city hall. Secondly.
No, Randy.
No, don't. I sat here quietly while you made comments and I'm gonna make my.
That isn't really, you just listen to BS, man.
It's not, and I, I appreciate the fact that, uh, people can accuse you of saying things you didn't say and meaning things you didn't mean. And yet they don't know the process and the process is really not rocket science. The ladies right now, if it's a.
Is this the last thing on the agenda before Justin?
Before Justin, yes.
We can maybe.
Can we recess?
I'm sorry, I have the floor.
I'd like to make a motion to temporarily adjourn till Justin gets here.
Uh, that's, the floor's not open for a motion right now, I'm in the middle of ex, of making a statement.
Yeah.
And when the ladies get a call for a work order, they place a work order, they pick up the phone and call someone when it's anything to do with sewer and it, and they let them know we've got a sewer issue, it takes priority. That priority notification goes out immediately. When we've got water spraying in the air, they do likewise. There is a process that is very simple, not at all complicated for priority issues. And it's not always being followed. So that's all I've got to say about it.
Is it written down? Is it written down? X happens, X, Y, Z, X happens, this happens. If it is not, that is on you, Mr. Mayor. That is not on any employees.
Okay, may I, may I say something?
Yes.
Are you familiar with green belts?
With what?
Green belts for the process improvement. It is the process that you go to six, six, when you go into the process, there's green belt actors you go to. And I think part of it is first you begin by knowing what the issue you do have is, you know, if you don't have a SOP, we don't really, can't take a good problem. So I think that's good if we look at it from that point of view, just like a business does look at, uh, the six, six more look at it and then you can put a lot of process improvement. I'm really saying that not to disrespect you or anything, I'm just trying to, I want the best for this city. I mean, I know everybody does, I'm just again saying it, we really need to think bigger than, well, she knows what to do whenever they call. We need to have something that SOP is here, direction is in there, person is in charge. We're now this small town of three hundred, five hundred people and, and I appreciate if you look at it that way, because it's not about you or what he said. He says that the fact is that in last meeting, we really understand too, just like Eric, that there is SOP here and they are, that there is not. Maybe they know something, but they heard something or you told and followed something, but that's not everywhere that we can find it. And if it's not in a paper, it doesn't exist in our family.
And, just, Mr. Mayor, just say you're wrong and you're working on it. That's it, take some accountability. What you said in the meeting, and I've listened to that meeting time and time again, was inaccurate information. I mean, I got screamed at, I've never been screamed at no matter what, but you screamed at me that night. And so, would you please just take some accountability, say that you provided inaccurate information. When you were on council, how long ago was that, about eight years? It is not, it's six, okay, so you know that back. I don't care with you on council or what the story was behind it. But drops, when no accountability is taken, we cannot move forward as a city if we continue to blame things. And as you said, if it's not written down, it's not happening. And you put the blame on employees as they call, they're saying there are SOPs and they choose not to follow them.
I didn't say they choose not to follow them.
Yes, you did.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
You made that statement.
You can pull it up in the meeting, Mayor.
And you pulled it up and quoted something else entirely and then said you stand by your false statement to begin with.
The reason that we're all getting emails from Cityvale residents is in part is because of how embarrassing this shit is.
It is embarrassing.
Yes, and you do not see, you do not see the source of it, no, Randy.
Yeah, the point is, the lady that did these came in, went to every person's seat for two weeks, spent time, put them together. She went back, makes her stand, and you're interrupting again.
Yes, because you're.
Because you're, I am not yelling nonsense if you listen.
If you, if you'd let us temporarily adjourn, Randy, I think that'd be better, everybody is special to you, so.
The lady that did it went in, spent two weeks getting the information from every department. She put together that information.
All my fears are gone, Randy, you've answered everything.
No, you haven't listened and that's.
Because what you're saying is not.
And people that live on a bullet point, no detailed information, make uninformed decisions.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a very short, detailed information on this.
I don't even know if this.
And if it's not written, what, what does this even mean?
And that's just searching for them is not the answer.
Randy, what permission do we need from you as a council to temporarily adjourn? Can we just walk outside? Do we have to sit here and listen to this, like?
Go ahead and when we come back, I will go ahead and address the issue.
Well, what, what this second, maybe this second.
Because I, I sat calmly by, listened to all of you speak. And I have been interrupted and talked over the whole time.
Excuses.
It's not an excuse.
They are all excuses.
No, it's an excuse only if you don't know the information.
They're an excuse if you're using the excuse, the poor performance of you and the department, that's what is an excuse. You are using it to excuse the poor performance. Nobody feels better when you dwell upon for a long time about what you think people care to hear. We are asking you specifically what we want to hear and right now, what everybody wanted to hear was just, do we have SOPs? And you said, I never claimed we have in the city hall. Do you listen to yourself, man? That is embarrassing. Can we please temporarily adjourn?
A little bit, we're on, and when we come back, I will go ahead and say what I've got to say.
Yes, I'm looking forward to it, we're all thrilled.
And we.
So can we temporarily adjourn, motion? Thank you.